I'd like to call this regularly scheduled, really most regularly meeting of our city commission order and call upon Commissioner Trevino to inspire us.
I'd like to welcome Pastor Jesus Marcos and his family and ask him to give us our invitation. Thank you.
Let us bow our heads and pray. Almighty God, Creator of the universe, you that are the giver of life eternal, a provider and giver of every good and perfect gift, you that are always worthy of worship and praise, to you we come together in prayer. Know that you will hear and answer the prayers of those that call with love and faith in you. Today, we thank you for your spirit through which we live, for life, for health, for family and friends, for our gracious, precious country, that even when there is so much divisiveness in so many areas of thought, you are still there showing your tender mercies to us. In this meeting, it serves as a testimony of service and dedication to the well-being of our people. May your blessing, I ask, be upon all those that give out their talents and time to keep our city on its growing path. May we all find pride in our diverse fields of work, may we serve with humbleness and always with kindness, may we strive to be one mind and one heart, for in so doing we will not only please you, oh Lord, but those that need our service. Bless us and keep us in your grace. All this I ask in the name of whom every knee shall bow, Jesus the Christ, whose sacrifice has brought the hope of life eternal. Amen.
They join to the pleasure, please.
Flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'd like to welcome all of you here tonight, glad to have you here at our meeting and Pastor, I want to thank you for joining us tonight.
Mayor, can I say that with the Savernack Church just called West Fillmore and I really appreciate you coming down short of us and your family.
And was a great contributor, a big help during prayer breakfast. Thank you for your leadership on that program. Thank you very much. All right, I have one as a presentation proclamation proclaiming the week of April 9th, 2012, Community Development Block Grant Week. Have CDVG board members or come up here and join me. Now, this is the proclamation that we like to come together and read about every year. Whereas the week of April 9th, 2012, was designated as National Community Development Week, National Community Development Association celebrates the Community Development Block Grant Program whereas the Community Development Block Grant Program has as its primary objective the development of viable urban communities by providing decent housing, a suitable living environment, and expanding economic opportunities principally to the persons of low and moderate income. Whereas the City of Harlingen receives a direct allocation from the Community Development Block Grant Program annually to provide resources for a wide variety of community development activities that principally benefit low and moderate persons, including the elderly, children, and whereas in our communities and in communities throughout the nation, 37 years of Community Development Block Grant Program funding has developed a strong network of relationships among local governments, residents, businesses, and non-brogan organizations. And therefore, I, Chris Bosworth, Mayor of the City of Harlingen, hereby proclaim the week of April 9th, through April 14th, as Community Development Block Grant Week. Supported this founding program that has made a tremendous contribution to the viability of the housing stock, infrastructure, services, and economic vitality of our communities. Further, this community urges Congress and in this administration to recognize the outstanding work being done locally and nationally by the Community Development Block Grant Program by supporting increased funding in the program fiscal year 2012. And I want to take a moment to especially recognize our Community Development Block Grant Award, all of you, many of you who have served many years of this work.
Thirty-seven years.
And do outstanding service for our community, do a great job in an outstanding and well-run regionally and actually recognized program. We want to recognize our executive director, Ted McPean, who does such a great job for us over there and all her staff at the CDVG. So congratulations and thank you so much for all the work that you do.
It's a great pleasure for us to take the responsibility that the commissioners have instilled upon us and we do it with great pride and honesty and integrity. And we hope to continue to do our best in to do it as a beautiful city. We thank you.
Thank you. And two, a presentation proclamation proclaiming the month of April 2012. Fair Housing Month. Who's coming up for that?
What?
Fair Housing Month, same group?
I want one pass.
Come on, come on up. All right, this proclamation is where as the National Fair Housing Act of 1968 and Fair Housing Amendment Act of 1988, we're given discrimination in housing, there is a national policy to provide within constitutional limits for fair housing in the United States. And whereas the principle of fair housing is not only natural law and national policy, but a fundamental human concept entitled for all Americans. Whereas fair housing means that you may freely choose a place of residence without regard to your race, national, natural origin, religion, sex, familial status, or handicap. It is your right to be treated in an equal and nondiscriminatory manner. Whereas 39th, Anniversary of National Fair Housing Law, during the month of April provides an opportunity for all Americans to recognize that complete success and the goal of equal housing opportunity can only be accomplished with the help and cooperation of all Americans. And now therefore, I, Chris Bosworth, Mayor of the City of Harlingen, hereby proclaim the month of April 2012 as Fair Housing Month. And the City of Harlingen, hereby urge all the citizens of this municipality to become aware of and support Fair Housing Law. I want to thank you and give you another opportunity to speak because you did so well last night.
I just want to say that this is something that is very dear to my heart because homeownership is something that helps families, children, as well as the city because of our taxes entity, it raises our tax value as a city and gives us the opportunity to grow and be able to provide better services to all people within our city. So I really believe in homeownership and I hope that we continue to be able to put forth affordable housing to everybody in our district. Thank you.
Thank you. We had great volunteers in our community, that's a good example of them. Now, I'm going to shift that down a little bit further so we can get some people out here. I am for approval of the minutes of the special meeting of February 20th, 2012, regular meeting on March 7th, 2012, and special meeting on March 14th, 2012. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes?
Mayor, some would for approval.
Second. All those in favor say aye. The minutes of the three meetings are approved.
Mayor, on the consent agenda, please let the record reflect that Commissioner Joey Trevino has followed the Compliment of the Ministers' Forum and will leave a statement in committee discussion of other items.
Are you going to carve this out or do you want?
I think Senator, let's just write it.
Senator, item five A, items five A for him.
Mayor, I'll make a motion if we take action.
All those in favor say aye. I suppose like sign motion carries, so we can bring that up.
Let the record reflect that Commissioner Trevino has made a new agreement.
Okay, my understanding is that wants to pass items six and seven. Do some other work, some more work. Or just pass items six and seven. They go to item A, consider to take action for a review of final plan, a letter from Harlingen CISD, Lou, a letter of proposal, ACISD, ninth grade academy, subdivision, Harlingen District, 47.3 acres land comprised of 21 acres of one acre, 21 acres of subdivision and after.
Mayor Commissioners, good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. Harlingen School District is requesting final plot approval for this one lot subdivision which is located on Teague and Lozano Street, east of our street. It's proposed, their proposed ninth grade academy, water and wastewater disposal will be provided by Water Works. All items on the final plot checks have been addressed. Staff is recommending approval of a final plan. Take any questions in the afterwards available for questions.
Is there a motion to approve the final plan? So, second. Any discussions? All those in favor say aye. Item nine, discuss and take action on approval of the agreement from the development corporation of Harlingen and Rare Hospitality International.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, City Staff. Thanks for opportunity to speak here tonight. This is a, this project I've worked on for, we've worked on for over two years, so it's a testament of the perseverance that we have here in the EDC. Rare Hospitality International operates the Longhorn Steak Houses and the city board, the city commission, the development corporation has agreed to issue a, an incentive of $100,000 to Longhorn as soon as they get the occupancy permits and having begun their regular operations. This project will create 24 full-time equivalent jobs and a minimum investment of $3 million and it's going to be located in the Cameron Crossing Development anchored by Bass Pro Shops. Any questions?
Is there a motion to approve the agreement?
Motion to approve agreement.
Okay, yeah, this is another great step in developing Cameron Crossing and around Bass Pro Shop and it's the beginning of a lot, a lot more announcements like this. All those in favor say aye. I suppose like sign motion.
This for the Longhorn Steak Houses?
Yes.
Their pad is going to be directly across from Bass Pro?
Yes, it's going to be on that cane.
When do they expect to break ground?
Well, according to their site development manager, their purchase, their purchase agreement has been reached and they're in the process of executing the contract. The site plan is expected to be completed by May 7th and immediately after that, I will contact the city staff and we'll get a developers meeting going, so, so that's the timeline they gave me.
Hopefully this summer we will see some construction.
Right.
Another job, nice to say, excellent job.
Thank you.
The last time I, the last time I heard was like August, or shoot for August, right around.
Well, the, yeah, hopefully, hopefully with everything goes well with, with all the permitting and everything, that's a good timeline.
Okay, sounds good. Item A, consider to take action, reduce the agreement from the development corporation of Harlingen Inc. for how long, I'm sure you're saying $15,000, $15,000. Approve the question, adjust accordingly.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, thank staff. I'm Don Hubbard, I'm the interim director for Harlingen Economic Development Corporation. Thank you for the time to speak to you. This agreement that we're requesting to be approved is addendum to the original agreement that was done with or executed between the EDC and the city and also with Owl Laboratories back in 2008, excuse me. Owl Labs has been here since 2000. They've had an 80,000 square foot facility up until they completed their 200,000 or 20,000 square foot expansion. The agreement was originally to have 16 employees, additional employees added to their 60 employees. Well, when the recession hit, they completed the building, but recession situations took its toll and they were unable to complete completely hire all 16. They did complete it, they have a certificate of occupancy and so they've been a fantastic corporate neighbor to Harlingen. They've been here, they've participated in the community, they've done all the different drives that possibly could with, I believe with United Way and they participate in the chamber. And so with that, they had requested, and I have Mr. Luis Rodriguez here to, if you would like to speak to him from Owl Labs, I want him to recognize him now. So with that, they.
You're a meeting in.
So they requested that we, they get some consideration regarding their completion of what they did as far as their, their expansion there. Things are coming around. The other situation that took place is that they had the tragedy in Japan, which was a tsunami and the earthquake, the earthquake before the tsunami. Eighty-five percent of their products are exported to Japan, so you can imagine what that did to their sales there. So we commend them for staying here and working and they maintain all 60 employees originally there. So the development corporation passed through the agreement and request your, your passage also. Any questions?
So the currently 60 full-time, full-time employees?
Yes, sir.
And are there plans?
They're planning to go ahead and hire because things are, the economy is getting better as far as and Japan's recovering from, from their tragedy and disaster.
And so are exports to Japan similar, going up, coming down?
May I let Mr. Rodriguez answer that?
They're increasing, slowly, but they're increasing.
Okay, is there a motion to approve?
One quick question there, the agreement was reviewed by your council?
Pardon?
Was your agreement reviewed by EDC council?
Yes, it was.
Okay, was it submitted to the city attorney?
We have, we have a signed agreement that from, but I don't believe she reviewed.
There is a note here on the agenda that she had not.
There is, that's correct. There is a written agreement.
Yes, ma'am.
With EDC.
Yes, ma'am.
We received a memo, but I did not receive an agreement.
Yeah, we were waiting for the completion of that and get a signature.
Please advise the city commissioner, the city attorney has not reviewed the agreement.
Well, this hour.
I'd like to make a motion, you know, approve the agreement of the, whether we do it.
Basically, was that the meeting?
Basically, the agreement just reduces the amount from 40,000 to 15,000.
It changes the amount from 40,000 to 15,000 plus it creates, originally the 40,000 was a forgivable loan, it's, it's changing, converting it to a grant.
A 15,000 dollar grant?
15,000 dollar grant, yes, sir.
Okay, they've already gotten the 15,000, they've already gotten 15,000?
No, they have not.
They haven't gotten any?
Nothing, they have not, they have not drawn down any money, any funds at all.
That's subject to the approval tonight, correct?
Correct. And we do have documentation that they have maintained the 60 employees from the date of the agreement.
And so this would be for fiscal year, calendar year 2012?
It would be for this fiscal year, for our fiscal year.
Current fiscal year, and the impact of current fiscal year?
Yes, sir. The money is already there, but it's just been sitting available, so the, it's also being requested that appropriate budget adjustment take place.
Your EDC board already basically approved it.
Correct, and, and it was approved and spoke about.
As long as it does last Tuesday night, Roxanne was president of the meeting and during the discussion.
Yes.
So, all right.
Let's just clarify, they're not going to hit the employment targets, right?
I'm sorry?
They're, they're not going to hit the employment targets of the original.
No, they're not.
But they're also not going to get the, the amount, the full amount that was of the original agreement.
That's correct.
Everything's reduced.
Correct.
As many people, they're not going to get as much money from the EDC.
They, they met two, two of those milestones, though they completed their 20,000 square foot expansion and they maintained their original 60 that they had.
I'm going to go ahead and make a motion if we take action to reduce the agreement. Second. To approve, to reduce the agreement, to approve the reduction in agreement, that development corporation.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Okay, then we'll go back to the city commission. I have a group.
Graciado Castañeda.
Graciado had to leave, can I speak on his behalf for Save Our Streets?
Yes.
This is Pastor Gilbert Fonseca from Breathe Life Christian Church, Spanish pastor there. My name's Gene Palmas. Graciado and I were kind of in the genesis of an organization called Save Our Streets for Jesus, where we like to go out, we minister on the streets of Harlingen, we try to, I guess, improve the conditions of the people through sharing the gospel, but also through providing real need. We've been, done many community activities, several of you guys have, have been to those activities, been a real blessing to see the commissioners there. We just wanted to come up tonight to say thank you to the city of Harlingen. We had a rally over Spring Break that involved missionaries coming down from other places and they use the, they use the facility at the old Bogus Ford lot, but the, the city was so gracious and kind and helping with a lot of the things there and it was a wonderful evening and everybody was well blessed and there was a lot of, of good that happened there and it is really neat to see you guys and the city of Harlingen getting behind things that just bless the citizens of Harlingen. And I think, I think, we just think it's awesome and we wanted to say thank you. I think Gabriel Gonzalez that worked with us, I apologize, I wasn't here.
They're there.
Did he help us out, I think? I was in, I was in Big Bend in this one, so, but, but I, but Graciado, again, he's meeting, he's a pastor in a church now, by the way. He just started a pastorship of a church and so he wasn't able to stay, he has a service tonight, but I think that was it.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for the work that you do.
Well, it's a blessing, it really is, a lot of fun.
Jose Rubio.
For the record, Jose Rubio Jr., 2309, Hacienda Road, Harlingen, Texas, 78552. Good evening, city commissioners, mayor. Mr. Bezmar, welcome to the city of Harlingen, to the, one of the toughest spots that you're about to encounter. Tonight I'm going to talk a little bit about accountability and that's what we've been talking about over the year, the past few years, that we need to hold public servants accountable. Tonight in executive session, you're going to talk about a, about a lawsuit, you know, that's public information, put some few copies up there on the, up there on, as I exit out tonight. And the lawsuit's about against the police department and for years we, we used to say that nothing wrong was going at the police department and there was. And this lawsuit speaks for itself. I think I saw some children here tonight in the audience, so I'm not going to go into the specifics because it's really embarrassing that this type of lawsuit is even filed, but it, it points out to the accountability of public servants. This afternoon, I also filed a ethics complaint against a board member of the EDC. You will be facing the future with a decision whether or not you will condone his actions, whether or not, how will you take this because, you know, I have found out that any ethics ordinance investigation takes its time and takes money, takes funds, et cetera. In the future, I'd like to see, you know, how we can create an ethics ordinance committee. We have a lot of committees already, so why not add one more and follow the, follow the rules like San Antonio does where civilians get a chance to review and a few, you know, a few lawyers, et cetera, get together and they, and before there were a lot of money's wasted. So this, this lawsuit, this, this complaint that I filed really bothers me that we still have problems, that people still don't understand what it's like to do the right thing. So Mr. Bezmar, you know, in the future, you are representing my interests, I live in your district and I will hold you very accountable, more than anyone else, because the other commissioners, you know, they've had their turns up there and they know. Thank you.
Andy Garván.
Hello, my name's Andy Garván and I'm with the Harlingen Fire Department and the reason I'm here today is to invite you guys and the public to our first inaugural bravest and finest barbecue cook-off fundraiser. This is the first, first year we putting it together. I'm not sure if y'all got the letters in y'all's mailboxes or not, I spoke to Mr. Trevino already, but we're having this cook-off fundraiser in order to raise funds for our burn fund. And what our burn fund is, is an account that we have within our association that we use to help families who have been affected by fire. We'll give them funds, go buy them clothes, put them up in hotel for a couple of nights, get these kids school supplies to get them back on their feet from, from them going through that tragedy. The event's going to be held April 28th at Nanty Hill Park, so I invite Mr. Mayor, the city commission, to call them to come out and support. It's going to be Valleywide Fire, Police Department, Support Patrol, DPS, and people like that, civil servants. So I have left letters for you guys in the mailboxes for y'all to be honorary judges. So I would like for Mr. Mayor and the city commission to be honorary judges as well at the actual event. If you don't, if you did not get those letters, I have some here if you want, want one now.
When is?
So, April 28th. April 28th.
Where?
Nanty Hill Park.
Time?
Time, registration begins at 6:00 AM. It should be done roughly around 5:00 or 6:00 o'clock in the afternoon, so it's going to be a fun event. My father and I, my father and I actually participate, we're competitors, but I just thought it would be a great idea to do it for the actual fire department and, and make it a year, a yearly event and make it bigger and better every year, so.
We're going to be the judges, so we actually get a plate from everybody that's cooking.
Yeah, that's correct, sir. You're going to be judges and y'all get to judge, see who's the best barbecue in the valley, so.
I don't know, Gary, sounds like a bad idea, you're up to relaunch.
It's not a bad gig, you know, you get to eat, so.
Never judge the pine wood derby contest. Sounds like a great, great program.
It's solid enough cost.
Thank you, sir, I like, appreciate that and like I said, every year I want to make this bigger and better. I don't want to spread the word too much, but I'm trying to get a partnership with Bass Pro Shop for next year, maybe possibly holding it there and making it a city thing, that way people around the valley, around the state know, hey, Harlingen's having this big barbecue, let's go down there and check it out, so. We want to use this first year as a learning year and see what happens, so.
Thank you, Andy. Sounds great.
I would like to donate mesquite tree, I've got a lot.
Why wouldn't we take that?
I'm stuck with two trees that a professional person cut down and I'm stuck.
Thanks again.
Thank you.
I would like to consider to take action for adoption, approval of the first reading of the bed and sleep argument for fiscal year 2011.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners, this is the third budget amendment brought to the commission for the fiscal year 2011-12. When you look on here, you'll have your ordinance that reflects the budget amendment, your exhibit A will give you your revenues and expenditures and the estimated fund balance by the end of the year for each fund. Exhibit B has the details of this budget amendment. On exhibit B, the revenues changes in total for the general fund is 218,897, I'm sorry, $897 increase that comes from the technology board and police grants that have been awarded after the budget was started. Okay, your expenditures for the general fund total up to 387,811 dollars, that comes from spending the technology funds on, we have a video and audio equipment that'll do the. will do the registrations, there's court scanners that will buy to scan all the information onto the system and kiosk machines that we're going to purchase to put in different city locations to help ease the lines at the court. There's also reductions in the victim's assistance grant which has moved over to the specialist investigation fund. And then there's expenditures here for the police grants that have been awarded. On the second page, there's a special investigation fund, those are the amounts that are being expended for the victim liaison that was moved from the general fund over to this fund. The Hotel Motel Fund, $37,000 was approved at a previous commission meeting for the, to go into, to help the, I think, the EDC with the Mexico marketing program. Communication Center change, $454 expenditures increased. The Neighborhood Stabilization Fund, increase in revenue and expenditures by $797,000 and that was to carry forward the unexpended grant monies from prior year for those to be carried over to this year and spent. On the debt service, it was $75,000 that was added and that was, it's actually due to the refunding bond issued in 2011 after the budget was started, it actually cost us $75,000 more in expense this year. Municipal golf course, there's two items on here for $9,000 and $30,000, four items that were previously approved by the city commission to use from their fund balance and this is the budget amendment to cover those. That's pretty much the budget amendment. Staff is recommending approval. Do you have any questions I can answer?
This represents about less than 1%, just rarely mentioned, just above 1%. Is there a motion to adopt?
Mary Jordan.
Yes.
The budget for the city of Harlingen, Texas, for the fiscal year October 1st, 2011 through September 30th, 2012, total budget revenues will increase to $64,241,172 and total budget expenditures will increase to $68,688,742 respectively, provided for publication of the captioned, "The Order is On," and any other matters related to the program.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Motion carries. Item 12, consider taking action to adopt and approve resolution to amend the Harlingen Downtown Improvement District budget for fiscal year 2011-2012.
Okay, yes, the Harlingen Downtown Improvement District is, the budget is amended by a resolution, so it's separate from the other funds. On this one, the Harlingen Downtown District, the expenditures are going up by $15,071. On Exhibit B, it details the, each item on there. There's three items that were encumbered through a PO in the prior year, we're carrying those expenditures over to the current year and then there were three storefront grants that were awarded up this year that need to be budgeted for.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the downtown?
Tell me.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. As opposed, by sign, motion carries. Okay, we have a series of parks recreation contracts. Item 13, consider taking action to approve the remodel of 2012 season of a contract between the city of Harlingen and the Harlingen Dynamo Junior and Rio Valley Youth Soccer Association scorecards for the use of designated fields at the Harlingen Soccer Complex.
Good evening, mayor, city commissioners. This league has used the field for a couple of years now. This is a subordinate agreement to an agreement that you'll consider for a Royal Youth Soccer League. Effectively, this group or this league uses the soccer complex when a Roy Youth is not using it. All items are up to date, they're a nonprofit, that is in there, their insurance is up to date, staff recommends approval, Parks Board recommends approval.
Is there a motion to approve the renewal of the contract?
I'll make the motion.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. As opposed, by sign, motion carries. Item 14, consider taking action to approve the renewal for the 2012 season contract between the city of Harlingen and the Royal Youth Soccer Club for the use of designated fields at the Harlingen Soccer Complex.
Mayor, I'll make the motion to approve the renewal. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I do, we did make some changes out there over the last year, hopefully they're for the better.
Yes, we have done some improvements.
Are they playing nice together? Well, it's talking about in terms of the city's facility and mowing and fixing the trash.
Yes, there's been a vast improvement since we've taken over, since October.
We're actually saving a little bit of money as well.
Correct.
Fields are looking better too. Okay, yeah.
I did notice the first thing that, one of the things that, it's a big thing is that the markets have been getting done, which weren't being done on the work, so that's a big help for the kids.
Okay, item 15 is to consider taking action to approve an 1-year contract between the city of Harlingen and the Harlingen Aquatic Team for the use of Pendleton Pool and Victor Pool.
Commissioner, you first considered this contract back in December. Harlingen Aquatic Team is a nonprofit competitive swim program. They've used various pools throughout Harlingen during their 50-year existence and for the last 20 years Pendleton Pool via an agreement with the school district. That agreement ended last September and we've been negotiating a separate agreement directly with them since. In December, you directed staff to continue negotiations, we went a little bit different direction with those negotiations. You have a lot of information in your packet with regards to that, but as what is uncommon in negotiating, we have a late, we think, an agreement in place. The Harlingen Aquatics Team has agreed to a $200 a month fee to be paid to the city for use of Pendleton Pool during the school year and then Victor Pool during the summer as they have accustomed, as they have done for the last number of years. Staff requests that you consider that and if you would accept, if you accept that, to bring an amended contract back as such at your next meeting.
Should we, should we pass this item until that contract is amended?
There's a couple of other things that need to be changed in there, so.
Might be better.
It might be better.
I'd like to make a motion to take this until we get the agreement finalized.
Mayor asked a question at the last city commission meeting regarding tabling and postponing and actually we did some research and wanted to be clear. Tabling is actually something that's put off to the side and requires a super majority to bring back. It's actually appropriate to state a motion to postpone until the next meeting. That will bring it back automatically.
To postpone.
Until next meeting, that's correct.
Is there, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pass it to the next meeting. Item 16, consider taking action to approve the renewal of the city of Harlingen and the Girls Radio Control Car Club for the use of designated areas across the town. Rather be an oil mill pavilion, it is an oil mill pavilion at Longtai Hill Fair Park for the fiscal year 2012 season.
Commissioner, the oil mill pavilion is located behind the new police station in Longtai Hill Fair Park, this is the oil mill pavilion. This is a larger view of oil mill pavilion, this is the facility that the radio control car club uses, they built that a number of years ago, they maintain it, it's on city property, hence the contract. Both the Parks Board and staff recommend approval.
So move. Second, your question, is the pavilion being leased also?
Yes, to a, the hockey, there's a roller hockey team.
Coming up to us before?
Yes, later in the year, correct.
One question on that, is that they're fully utilizing it all the time, the hockey league?
From what we know, yes. Yes, because we're regular in there maintaining it.
Okay, is that approached by the, what's it, the roller derby club?
Yes.
Have they approached you?
Yes.
Anything come out of it?
Nothing yet. The rolleristas?
Yeah.
Yes, nothing yet.
Okay, I think we have a motion to say on the year, on the year, all those in favor say aye. As opposed, by sign, motion carries. Item 17, consider taking action to approve the renewal of the 2012 season of a contract between the city of Harlingen and Harlingen Athletic Club Softball League for the use of fields at Roy Park.
Commissioner, the girls' fast pitch league is used at Roy Park for a number of years. Just to get you up to date on the project that we're about to initiate, this, we're about to construct the fourth field on this site out of the current budget. You appropriated monies for this in the current year budget, it's going to be a smaller field for the smaller kids. We got a little bit of, about $15,000 for the fence work and what that will also do is secure this facility. We've had a number of vandalisms out here as this, as this facility is open and so this project will also secure the facility and close it.
Fence in that corner and then you'll be able to finish it around the back.
Correct, correct. The Parks Board recommends approval of the contract as does staff.
I'd just like, I'd just like to say that that park is pretty heavily used and we need, we need to think about budgeting for a better restroom, so, I'm sorry, that is in your district, but they, they're using the park restroom right now and for the little kids, it's a pretty far run over there. And plus, if we can fortify their concession stand and use a combination bathroom like we have over at the National, I think that we really need to look into something like that.
Agreed.
When you say vandalism, can you give me a few examples?
Breaking into their concession stand.
Yeah, kicking in the door of their, their concession stand and just stealing whatever they've got stored in there.
Well, they built it and it's wood, it's the siding is wood, it's not block brick like some of the others.
Yeah, we've recently put on a steel gated door onto that to help try to alleviate that until the fencing project is complete.
I don't think they cut through the wall the last time.
Oh, yeah.
They've got to try to see if we've got any funds, I hope not as far as pulling the little black house.
At one time we were talking about updating our parks plan to do all the concession stands, the restrooms and all the parks, all the facilities.
Yeah, we need to.
They haven't come back to us.
Needs assessment, yes.
Yeah. What's it actually come back to us?
It hasn't initiated, sir.
I think, did we budget money for that?
No, sir.
I'd like to see a proposal for a combination concession restroom for that facility and maybe approaching the 4B to see if we can get that funded.
Yes, sir.
What does this, this will cost about $280,000, Commissioner?
Well, we've been doing it on water parks.
Legal comment.
Okay, there, let me get a second, okay, there was a motion, second in fact, in the church media and then we got a second, so we have more discussion.
I do have a legal comment, sir. The Harlingen Girls Softball League has applied for 501(c)(3) exemption, but they have not received that certification from IRS yet, is that correct?
That is correct.
So, can we legally give them, award them a facility use agreement? Isn't that part of the mandatory requirement?
I think when we first, the direction that staff got when we first discussed, making sure that they were 501(c)(3) compliant included, if they haven't been, that applying for it would substantiate for now and then the next time it would, it would need to be in full compliance.
Maybe also said too, as long as they get before the, I guess, season's over.
Correct, yeah, the fact of the matter is, they just haven't heard back from the IRS yet and so we don't know how long it's going to take.
Okay, well, that's in, that's in the agreement, they've got a 501(c)(3).
Or being applied, have applied.
Correct.
Okay, well, so they'll have to comply with the agreement if we approve it.
Yes. And they're in the process.
You were, you're turning, recommending with not approval.
No, I just wanted to make a legal comment, notation, that they have not submitted a certification from IRS yet, that's specified in the C.
Correct.
We have a motion, second, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, by sign, motion carries. Item 18, consider taking action to approve the renewal of 2012 season contract between the city of Harlingen and Harlingen American Little League for the use of designated fields at Pendleton Park and Longtai Hill Park.
American Little League has used these fields at Pendleton Park, this is kind of known as Giants Field, they have these smaller fields that surround Pendleton Pool and they also use what has been referred to, but it's not official name, as the Kmart Field. Now, the Kmart Field has had some significant improvements to it this budget year. There was a $75,000 lighting project to light this field and then out of the current budget, the city also basically rebuilt those fields with turf, irrigation systems, rebuilt the dugout, so it's a completely new field for those folks. Parks Board recommends approval of the contract as does staff.
Can we approach Kmart about paying for this? Have we given anything, naming rights for how many years?
It's, actually the Parks Board has asked us to come up with alternate.
I'd settle if they just clean up the trash.
Well, we got the defense to catch it, right?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve the contract.
Second.
Any, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Item 19, consider taking action to approve the renewal of the 2012 season of a contract between the city of Harlingen and Harlingen National Bronco Baseball League for the use of the ball fields at the Thomas Wilson Sports Park.
National Bronco is one of the largest leagues we have, they have anywhere between 900 and 1,000 kids and they use these eight fields at the sports complex on Wilson Road. Parks Board recommends approval of the contract as does staff.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Hold on a second, I'm going to ask a question. I had heard that the Harlem, or the National Bronco League has somehow, is getting regional games to come down here, now regional finals or tournaments, whatever.
Terminals.
Okay, and I had also heard that they may not have enough room out there to play the games.
Correct.
Okay, so are you going to prepare to, they have that place to place cells, switch your place cells to the park?
When they come to us, yes, we, I've discussed this with Jerry and when and if they can solidify the number of teams that we're, we need to prepare for, yes. They've actually asked, they've actually come to us a number of times asking if there are other fields available just for their, their league and of course, everything that we have is contracted out at the, at the moment.
There's also additional room to expand out there, right?
Yes.
Yeah, they're, they're on the bottom.
Yes.
Part of this facility, I think we need to.
One of the things that I don't think they did during the last national tournament several years back, they did not use the adult field, I think that's something they will do, and use the whole, the Tom Wilson Complex.
Correct. I think years back they may have where they shortened the bases to use it and put in temporary.
I know they do play tournaments at Tom Wilson Park.
All the time.
But not from the, this group, the Harlingen National.
You can put temporary fencing in too.
Yes. I think we've done that before.
Yeah, you bet.
Okay, any other questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 20, consider taking action to approve the renewal of a contract between the city of Harlingen and the Harlingen National Bronco Pony League for the use of designated fields at Victor Park for 2012 season.
This is also a youth baseball softball league and they use these five fields at Victor Park, this is the Victor Park Pool, this is the Expressway Golf Course back here, these five fields they had for a number of years. Parks Board recommends approval as does staff.
I'll make a motion, then we take action to approve the renewal contract. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, motion carries. Item 21 announces that the United States Department of Justice granted interference in the city of Harlingen, change the city's general election date from May 12, 2012 to 6, 2012, time of the presidential, presidential calendar November 6, 2012, time of the time extension, office term effective of the general election date change.
Pursuant to Texas Senate Bill 100 on November 21st, 2011, the city commission approved Resolution Number 11R-48. This resolution changed the city's general elections from May to November and provided for the holdover of places affected by the general election date change. On January 24th, 2012, the city submitted a letter to the United States Department of Justice requesting clearance to change this general election date from May to November to comply with the Texas Secretary of State's calendar for the November 6, 2012 election and provided one-time extension to the office terms affected by the change in the general election date. Just recently, on March 20th, 2012, United States Department of Justice declared these above requests, the city's request and the US Department of Justice declared letter are in the agenda packets available for public viewing.
All right, any questions about that? Item 22, board appointments? Any board appointments? I have none, so we'll go on to item 23. But as gentlemen, I'm going to read the. But as gentlemen, I'm going to read the executive session item. We will be going into executive session, there will be action taken on items, there may be action taken on items 22, 5, 26, actively come out of executive session. Other than that, those are the contract, those are the local agreements, that we agreed to approve, so there will be some action, but that would be the only action taken. Item 23, close to executive session, discuss the following items, A, pursuit of chapter 551, so chapter B, the C.A. government of the county, section 551, 071, consultation with the city of Harlem, Seagull and Vice, armed Kansas Shirley versus City of Harlem Texas Conference, 2011, ECL, 08479, and 9, Ms. Cameron, County, Port, and Seek, legal advice, criminal, legal services, private, executive, and Seagull, vice, criminal, and Texas, and free, so, responding to, is there a motion to go into executive session?
Second.
All those in favor say aye. All right, as gentlemen, we're in executive session now, and if you're not involved with item, or the item police, step outside, thank you.
Consider taking action to approve a revised interlocal agreement between the city and Campbell County regarding the county's participation in the city's tax increment green investment zone number one. Is there a motion?
Was Mr. Kent opposed, that?
Okay, first one, second.
Second, all favor?
Aye.
Item 25, consider taking action to approve a revised interlocal agreement between the city and Campbell County regarding the city's participation in the city's tax increment re-invested zone number two.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Item number 26, consider taking action to approve a revised interlocal agreement between the city and Campbell County regarding the county's participation in the city's tax increment re-invested zone number three.
Second.
All favor?
Aye. Yeah, yeah, but the only, that's it for the session, but the only thing that we missed is we never talked about more appointments.
Yeah, we did, we did.
Yeah.
Oh, right, the, yeah, okay, all right, well, so, thus then, make motion to adjourn. Let's go.
Or...
No, no.
Yeah, you got it. You have to...
Okay.